Me? No, I've got new contacts.
Oh, definitely.
Good morning. Interesting segue. Today is Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is nine oh four A.M. And I'm going to call this regular term meeting of B County Commissioners Court to order. We are physically located at B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom, number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was the call to order. If everybody would please join me in standing and join Commissioner DuWitt, please, very.
Lord our God, thank you for the state. Thank you for life, Lord. Thank you for putting us on this earth. Help us to do your will. Help this court to make the decisions that benefit the people of B County. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Once again, my apologies that I think I stumbled on the pledge. I guess both the Texas pledge and the United States pledge completed. At this point in time, we're on agenda number four. I'd like to recognize some visitors. We do have some visitors in the, uh, in the audience, but, uh, this is, this is not an embarrassment time. So if there's any visitors who would like to identify themselves for the record, you may do so at this time. Again, no pressure. If you want to make a public comment, that's a different agenda item. So this isn't, uh, I'm not asking you to make any statements, but if you'd like to identify yourself for the record, uh, please do so now. Hearing none, I'd like to welcome everybody here, uh, and, uh, that is, that is visiting. Thank you for coming. Please feel free to come back, uh, often, and to all our online visitors. Uh, hello and welcome, and thank you for watching and tuning in as well. That's the recognized visitors agenda item. Agenda item number five, Commissioners Court opening remarks. I, I can't remember which side we go first. Commissioner Hager?
Mine's very short. Uh, with great pleasure and appreciation for Ray, his due diligence. Six thirty-one is now complete, uh, finally, and we have a one-year warranty on the road from the construction company. Uh, also, number two on the agenda, uh, talking to Tex dot, uh, I know you're probably not going to believe this, but they're out of money in their budget. Uh, so the drainage issue in Tynan, right there in front of the, uh, co-op, uh, will be handled first thing as soon as their budget money comes in this year. So, uh, they have everything lined up except, uh, nobody wants to write that check right now. So they'll wait till the money comes in and they'll go from there. Other than that, it's just business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hager. Commissioner DuWitt?
Thanks, sir. A couple of things. I want to remind everybody that there's one more election. I know we've had several, and our election administrator has done a great job cracking something wrong. It's tomorrow. It's voting day, seven to seven. This is an interesting election. It's one of the few times you will ever see Democratic and Republican candidates on the same ballot. We encourage everyone to go vote. As I've said in the past, if you vote and your candidate does not get selected, you have, in my opinion, the right to complain. If you don't go vote, I don't want to hear it. That's just me. That's just me talking. I was, uh, pleased to be at the Memorial Day Celebration in Mineral. It was very, very good, very well attended. Orsted, our wind farm folks have been working very hard with our Road and Bridge Administrator on the roads. Uh, we met with them this last week. They're gonna be repairing a couple of roads. Uh, they've given their, we've, uh, they've been given their marching orders by Mr. Gonzalez, who knows just about everything there is to know about county roads. The building, construction of the building in Mineral is, uh, still moving along. That is the, uh, shelter for the school kids and their parents from Pawnee to wait for the buses. Pawnee, speaking of Pawnee, you never know what's happening in these small towns until the people know who their commissioner is. Got several calls. There's a sports bar in Moody that's looking to locate in Pawnee, outside of Pawnee, about two miles on a hill. Now, it's hot and dry and dusty, bleaching, black brush on this hill, but they're in the process of doing their due diligence. They put up the sign. The local people, uh, feel very strongly against it, except I got a couple of calls that were formed. So, uh, as a county commissioner, I will guide these folks as best I can on what to do. I can't come down on either side of this issue, but, uh, I'm, I'm kinda surprised that this would be going in there in Pawnee. And the people putting it in are from Sinnes, so I don't, it doesn't make sense, but that's their business, not mine. But the, uh, County Road one twenty-three that we received, uh, quite a bit of comment on, that had the signs on it, is in the works. County Road one fifty is in the works. That's the one that we received the twenty thousand dollars from the oil company. Everything is in the works. Road and Bridge has had problems getting materials. They're expensive. They've gotten a few loads of materials, not a whole lot, but everything's moving along fine in precinct two, and we appreciate the work of our Road and Bridge Administrator and all the hard work and due diligence he's doing. We, we've got a situation in Mineral again where a landlord wants to know where his property stake is. So it looks like a bunch of armadillos and gophers been up there working in, in the area trying to find it, but, uh, we think if we're gonna find it, it's where we don't employ them. On that note, sir, I'll pass to my colleague to the right.
All right. Well, yeah. Take a break. All right. First of all, I want to, uh, give a big thank you to whoever it was that gave me a really awesome compliment on Dolly one oh six. I had a text message and it just read, hey, you might want to turn into, to Dolly's radio station and listen for a little while. And, uh, someone had complimented me on the, uh, coming down on that talk for mental health day and the fact that I was here and here all day. It was only like two hundred and eleven degrees, just short of boiling. And, uh, then judging the event as well. So thank you to whoever that was. May twenty-fifth, Robbie and I, we picked up a bunch of illegal dumping on three oh two off of Sugar Ridge Lane. We also went riding around, uh, around Lepara, Gill Ranch, Vigo, and Ridgeway, where we collected around fifty tires and, uh, got all that taken care of. And then, uh, May twenty-eighth, Chris Molinado and I, we put up the rest of my load, no littering signs I had made, uh, up on Pressa, Lehman off of Vigo, Vigo and Gill Ranch, Sandoval by A and D Will Alignment. Um, so basically, I've got entire Blueberry Hill covered on every entrance coming in to please not litter and all that good stuff. We put up some Crime Stopper and No Dumping signs on Central Lane off of eight eighty-eight, on Harrison and Jimison and Vigo. And, um, we picked up a bunch of, uh, wood and trash off of Lehman towards Vigo that day as well. I talked to Ray, uh, about brush in Blueberry Hill, and he had told me that they'd be added about three weeks from the time I talked to him. So I actually went on the Facebook page and let out all the residents of Blueberry Hill, you know, if you haven't got stuff cut, you need to go ahead and do it. This brush pickup will be coming soon. June the fourth, I had to thank Michelle Preston, Patty Johnson, Laurie Humberson, Robbie Guerrero, Chris Molinado, Daniel Mendez, Revo Mayberry, and James Martin. We went out and we painted, and it was, we were actually volunteered by Ms. Warnech. Thank you. We actually went out and primed and painted the entire American Legion building out on, uh, ten oh four West Harrison.
Heffernan.
Yeah, Heffernan. I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, that building, the front of it was white with that orange-looking brick on the sides and the back. Well, it's, it's all been primed, painted, the wood trim, everything. You've got the entire thing done. So it looked really, really, really good. And then, uh, Ms., Mr. Martin's wife and Sylvia Hinderman, along with their helpers, provided us lunch. Thank you for that. And, um, it was, it was hot, but we got it done, you know? And I posted on Facebook because it was the old American Legion Hall. Um, it's important that the veterans stick together, but it's even just as important as the community can come together. And that was a perfect example of, I couldn't have gone out there that day and done all that work on myself and got it done in one day. You know, it's just impossible. But, uh, with the group of people, we got it done, the entire thing. Just morning, make light work. Um, also that evening, I attended the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser casino night, which was a really big success. That was, that was pretty cool. That was my first time to do that. Uh, June the eighth, Robbie and I, we went and picked up more illegal dumping off of Harrison, and spoke with Ray about County Road five twelve off of, uh, seven ninety-six and Lepara Road to the Livo County Line. And he informed me that they were doing some other stuff at Mineral and then, and then also at least the next thing, uh, thank you, Ray, for the, uh, Almador Ramirez and, uh, Sky Ton Lane. They were fixing all that and steel coating it. So thanks for that. That's it. Thank you very much, Commissioner Landry, Commissioner DuWitt, Commissioner Hager for this, uh, report. I'd like to take my time just briefly to, um, highlight the strong effort of our indigent defense, uh, uh, nonprofit, Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid. Um, earlier this year, Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid divulged to, uh, B County, uh, as well as to the, uh, Texas Agency that deals with indigent defense, Texas Indigent Defense Commission, the TIDC, that, um, TRLA has been subsidizing the actual cost of the operational, uh, expenses of the contract that they have to provide indigent services in B, Livo, McMullen, and at the time, Rupuryo Counties, um, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars, and that they could no longer do it. Their unrestricted funds that they had available, um, were drawing up. As a result of that, uh, TRLA, uh, and specifically Nicole Mizek had to, uh, retool the entire budget, uh, to, to reinsert these, uh, this, this component of, uh, of costs that, uh, TRLA had been picking up, but that, uh, wasn't included in the actual contract. So we had an actual contract for an actual number that didn't reflect the actual expenses for that contract to the tune of several, several hundred thousand dollars. Um, uh, Ms. Mizek made quick work of the grant application under a, a high-pressure, short, uh, turnaround time, uh, submitted it, uh, and TIDC, uh, they're, uh, they had a committee that considered it, uh, but then, uh, the committee passed it to the main board without, uh, rendering a vote one way or the other, which required Nicole to reach out to, uh, myself, Judge Huck in Livo County, uh, and Judge Keel in McMullen County. And so last Thursday, uh, the three of us made a trip to Austin. Uh, we appeared before TIDC. Fortunately, we didn't have to say anything. Uh, I think it's probably, uh, the hard work of Nicole that, uh, they got us across the finish line, but we'll take a little bit of credit that our mere presence caused the TIDC commission to, uh, to approve our request. But in reality, it really was, uh, the good work of Ms. Mizek. I'd like to thank her and the Texas River Grand Legal Aid organization for their continued efforts and support, uh, for all our constituents and those that may be getting into legal trouble, uh, within our territorial borders. Uh, indigent defense is incredibly important, especially in today's day and age, as our income gap widens, uh, between those who have and those who have not. Um, additionally, I'd like to, uh, thank the TIDC, uh, each commissioner member, uh, each commission member, uh, for their support of this program, for their dedication, uh, to indigent defense in the state of Texas. So thank you all, uh, to everybody that's concerned, and, uh, and I look forward to, uh, two more years at least with, uh, with, with TRLA, uh, and, uh, and a robust, uh, indigent defense system in our county. Uh, moving on, agenda item number six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address Commissioners Court? Now is the time. If anybody is interested, do we have anybody wrote down on the list? Nobody? Nobody at all? Okay. Um, we'll move on to agenda item number seven. Agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve of comment?
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DuWitt, you have the floor.
Sir, comment, there's only, I had a few minor corrections to the, uh, call meeting notes, and I gave it to the, uh, vote.
Great. Thank you. Subject to those, uh, nonsubstantive changes, are there any other comments or discussion, any other issues with, uh, any consent agenda? Thank you all very much. Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, moving on. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approve appointment to the workforce solutions of the Coastal Bend Board of Directors. Uh, this is a, uh, a position that Dr. Hoggard, uh, has served in since he arrived, uh, in B County. Dr. Hoggard's the president of Coastal Bend College. Um, I spoke with Mr. Trevino, and he is a, uh, he, he recommended, asked, suggested that I reappoint, uh, Dr. Hoggard. Um, I think that's a great idea. And so, um, what I'm asking, uh, in, with respect to this particular with Coastal Plains and, and this particular board, um, Ken Trevino said that I make the appointment, but as is the case in, in B County, we like to do everything as a team, and so I'd ask for, uh, Commissioners Court's support. So I will make a motion to appoint, reappoint Justin Hoggard, uh, to the board, uh, and I'd ask for a second.
I have a second.
Thank you all very much. I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Dr. Hoggard, for your continued, uh, efforts on behalf of all of B County. Agenda item number nine, approve American Rescue Plan Act Contract for Engineering Services Amendment Number One between B County and Lynn Engineering LLC, DBA John D. Mercer and Associates Inc.
Yes. Move to approve, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, for those in the audience and on the internet, this is largely ministerial. There's nothing further. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number ten, approve proclamation proclaiming the month of June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm sorry?
Yes, we do.
Absolutely. I can read it out into the record. Would you like that?
Yes.
Just don't read my notes.
I won't read it. I won't read it. Is that one in larger font? Getting old.
Yes.
I've got these new contact prescriptions, and everything seems fuzzy.
This doesn't have my notes on it.
Okay.
I'll tell you what they are later.
I hope so. We'll find out. You read along, and if I make a mistake, please let me know. The, the proclamation reads thusly, Elder Abuse Awareness Month, B County Proclamation. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And whereas, as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas, abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern, affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas, abuse affected more than one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eight older adults with people and people with disabilities in Texas in two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas, abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly under, underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas, adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. And whereas, elder abuse is everyone's business. It's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now therefore, the Commissioners Court of B County, Texas, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim the month of June, two thousand and twenty-two, to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month in B County, Texas, and urge all residents to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities. Thank you. Thank you. No.
I, I know where he's focusing that, sir.
I know. He's looking at you.
I looked it up. It came one over sixty.
Yeah, this would be great. Um, let's, let's take a vote first.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion on this? It's a very important issue. Oh. Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Hager.
I'm sorry.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, if we could all rise for a vote. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. This is a very important issue.
All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Do it.
Moving on, agenda item number eleven, approve submission of Commissioners Court notification letter from Coastal Plains Community Center. I believe that one is, uh, the handout that we received. Yes, sir. Give the commissioners a moment to review it.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number twelve, approve official bond and oath for Ray Gonzalez, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Move to approve, second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Welcome back. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number thirteen, approve expo auditorium dance floor closed. Commissioner Lenny, this is your item. Tell us what you got.
Man. Okay.
It's not gonna be expensive, right?
No. I'm sure that you were actually gonna fund it.
Somebody's telling stories out of school.
Uh, no. We've got, uh, Domingo, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, he's here, uh, today. He's got some samples and, uh, to talk a little bit about. We've got two different, uh, proposals on this. One is, uh, concrete, and, um, the other one is doing the wood floor. And I'd like to get Domingo to come up to explain, uh, the, all the differences in both and why, and then also the, uh, the samples he has in hand for us to look at.
Excellent. Please come down, Mr. Lopez, and, and identify yourself for a record when you get into the deal.
Right. Sure. I know red stain concrete is not this concrete, concrete, stained to be brown or whatever. Correct. Yes. I understand. And I'm just leaving that, leaving up there.
You have a simple divider, so. Mr. Lopez, you have the floor, sir.
All right, my fellow, uh, my name's Domingo Lopez. I'm with Jale Square Construction. Uh, I looked at this project with April Bonica and John. Um, gave two options for a new wood floor. Seems like they're having problems with the floor now. I don't know if it's termites. Uh, there's some rotting in it. Um, there's a certain section that came up. I gave two options. One, to take everything out, go back with concrete, which is a cheaper cost than the floor. Uh, the only issue I see there is we're looking at about forty-two hundred square feet, quite a bit of concrete, about forty, fifty yards. And with that concrete there, we would have to do, uh, control joints, which is about eighth-inch saw cutting. Don't know if they would want that on a dance floor, uh, because it seems that's what it's used for. So we did give that option, and the control joints, what that does helps with cracking. Concrete, like anywhere else, you know, you're gonna get your hairline cracks and whatnot. Uh, and then we would go with the stain and the seal over it. Uh, the other option, of course, is with this floor, a little more expensive, but this is a commercial floor. It's, uh, three-quarter inch thick, similar to what they have there. Not sure how long that floor's been there, but it seems it's been quite a bit and lasted a long time. This one does have a ten-year warranty for commercial. Um, great on this, and it is prefinished. And actually, it, it would be quicker than the concrete. Uh, the concrete, we would have to let it cure for probably up to thirty days before we could seal it. Plus the work, we're looking, you know, two, three weeks plus it, I would say more six to eight weeks for the concrete portion. Uh, and then we would have to get a pump truck, pump it through the doors. It'd be a little, a bit of, uh, a little more labor in terms of, um, like I said, but the floor is prefinished, so I think it'd be a lot quicker. We're taking out all the two-by-fours that are in there, putting new two-by-fours, sixteen inches on center, um, three-quarter inch plywood, and then the floor on top, which will give you flush with the existing, just like the, uh, existing floors now. Of course, yes, sir. The material for the wood floor is like the two-by-fours. Are you using treated material so we won't have to worry about termites again or not? Treated? No, I did not have treated. What is there is yellow primer. I'm talking about what you're gonna go back with. Yellow pine? Oh, the floor or the two-by-fours and plywood? The subfloor. Yes, sir. The subfloor. No, there's, it's all yellow primer, PDX. Uh, we can, I can revise if you wanted to go with treated. I'm thinking about future termites. Yes.
Is that, because our, uh, our pest master, is that something, uh, that they can do, uh, with their treatment that they're gonna do once the floor's lifted? Uh, because that's, they're gonna need a, a portion of time to go in.
They were gonna, once the floor's up, they're gonna go in and treat that. The bottom, and then they could even go in with the two-by-fours, and they could actually go in and treat, you know, the two-by-fours as well.
I, I think, uh, that can be arranged with our pest master.
There are huge differences.
Yeah, we could treat it.
Also availability. I think we need to take a look at that, have our pest people do that. That way, it's, it's, it's covered up and it's down, and it's, should be good for a long time. Yes. And I, I can give a revised cost at the table with treated if you like, that we can. Be both options.
Did you, did we go through the formal bid process? Do we have to at this?
Jale Square just started one of our co-ops.
Oh.
So back to the work on that. Thank you.
I, I tell you, if, if we're gonna get our pest control people to do their due diligence and do their treatment, I don't think we should go back and have him do a.
With the tree that's from the tree now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah. I, I don't want, I don't want to slow this process down.
Yeah, no, no. Another, the, the wood floor is a bit more, but sooner go back with the wood versus the concrete. The, over time, you're gonna have like one in a Walmart in the pantry, that same concrete looks great at first, but you're gonna have, the traffic is, the deep rubbing is gonna be coming off, fading and whatnot, whereas this floor is gonna be there just like that's the next six to eight.
You know, another, another aspect, I've talked to several people about what they thought we ought to do. They said, well, if you're gonna make a dance floor out of, it needs to be wood. It really does. And, and it, it gives a, a touch of class if you use that side of the Coliseum or the governor, whoever might be there, instead of your own concrete floor. Matter of fact, do we have the funds?
Yes. Uh, our C-Hot, uh, funds, uh, will be able to cover the difference.
Commissioner Hager, just.
No, uh, my other comment was, you know, as a forewarner, it's a matter of just going in and re-sanding, re-coating, and you don't need to get this. I think this is all pretty, this is pretty.
Yeah, it's pretty fresh.
So it may not be an issue. But again, you know, once, once it becomes, starts showing its age or whatever, can always be refurbished again at a minimal cost.
Not a question. Let's say we say, okay, go for it. From the day you start to the day someone can use the floor, about how long will that take? Just a guesstimate, not that we're gonna hold you to. No, guesstimates, um, I would say from start to finish, I'd need about two to three weeks. I'd say about three weeks, yes. Now, until I place an order, I don't know how long it takes to get this floor. Yeah. That's, that's, uh, I can make calls, of course, for going to move forward, and I can kind of get a lead time on the floor. Of course, right now, everything has been very, very long lead times, um, but I can find out about that. But to do the work, I'd say about three weeks. I think we can, we can get everything knocked out. And it's actually quicker to do it with the wood floor than the concrete, right? Yeah. Yeah, it is. And then we don't have to wait for it to cure.
Right.
I'm not sure if you know this, Commissioner, but concrete goes up just about like gas right now.
Yes.
It went from one forty to one sixty in less than two days, and now it's at one eighty.
And wood's getting cheaper right now.
And wood's getting much cheaper. Yeah.
Can you show us the, the sample port you have?
Yes. This is the samples we got here. Uh, this is a three-quarter inch floor.
Now, is this real wood?
Yes.
Commissioner, which one are you looking at, sir? Which one are you recommending to the board?
Well, the interior, that, that tire exposed center needs to be repainted.
That's for another.
Yeah, this, which floor you're looking at?
Well, you gotta do interior, you gotta get the floor that, you don't wanna get the floor that matches the current painting on the wall, but, but, uh, I was looking at either at that top right. Uh, you only do something that's lighter, it's not gonna show as much.
that you need so that you can go ahead and, and start ordering your materials and start scheduling, so that when the time comes for us to actually kick, or the time comes for you to actually kick off this project, there's no delays on your side, there's no projects, other projects that y'all are working on that push you back a couple of days, or other projects that force you to pull your guys off of this project for a couple of days, so that we can really get you, get you, get, basically just get you captured for that period of time from beginning of project to end of project without negatively impacting y'all's business.
Yes.
Is, is this enough time? Are there any risks or concerns that Commissioners' Court needs to be made aware of that would impact that, that very sensitive timing issue that we have?
No, I don't see any issues. And since you said it'd be after Thanksgiving, that'll get us time to get everything ordered, keep it in the warehouse. That way, we have the material on hand.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to have to order that material and actually put it in the Expo Center to acclimate?
Yeah, so it will have to acclimate for a few days, at least twenty-four hours.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure that AC unit runs, did they ever shut it off, or?
Non-essential.
I think they'll have, a couple of times I went in there with their system, so.
And we can make space for the, like, when you, if you need to put it out a week in advance or something, you have a feeling there's a way, we could store it somewhere on the stage or have it put away for any other events.
One, one, one comment I'd like to make. This is going to be some upfront costs for you, and I think that, that cost can be submitted and paid as it comes in. Is that correct, Madam? Okay. Because we don't want you to have to sit there and pay for this, and then five months from now, put it in, so.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Are there any other questions for Mr. Lopez? Any other discussion matters?
I, I appreciate you taking this project on. It's very important to us and to the public, and I, I like what I see.
We definitely need to get with, with, I guess, Wally and Mr. Lopez together and try to find out at a good time.
Absolutely, and I'll volunteer, Mrs. Estrada, for scheduling all of that.
Let me throw something else at, it could be that there's a month between now and November, that there's an opening for four or five weeks.
Yeah, and we can make.
You wouldn't mind moving it up, would you? And then we can also coordinate with our pest control people.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
That's one other comment. Let's add the pest control people.
We have to.
End of that conversation.
They need to, you, you, you and them, they need, y'all need to talk.
Yes.
Yeah, sooner rather than later, but.
According to.
And we want the strongest possible termite side we can put down. We don't want, we don't want to do this again in any of our lifetimes. Great.
Agreed.
What is your recommendation, Commissioner?
I recommend that we go ahead and go forth with the wood floor, and I will get with Wally and the pest control people, Mrs. Lenny, and get a good date, pin down.
And that's your motion? I will second that. Which, which, which one do you prefer?
The one on the right. Look at the top right.
I concur with that also. It's part of the motion.
That's a motion to approve the bid submitted in the amount of, by JL Squared, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars with the top right square stain as the initial preference. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that was the second as well?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Thank you again, Mr. Lopez, for your efforts on behalf of the county and your time this morning. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Approve Law Enforcement Support Office Application for Participation Authorized Screeners Form for the Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Franco, how are you, sir?
I'm good. Lieutenant Eric Franco with the Sheriff's Office. This is just about a housekeeping matter, our yearly application, which required the sheriff's signature and the county judge.
I move to approve of the comment.
Second. Motion in a second, Commissioner Whit.
As I went through this, I didn't see the county judge, but he's on the last page.
The last page.
It's the last page.
As far as sixteen pages, it's a little long-winded.
It is there, and I look for that every time, but it is there, and y'all did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Very good.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, you do.
Oh, I already have one.
I already have my.
Oh, that's right, and then I gave you the comment.
Absolutely, no problem.
I'm just looking forward to our free budget meetings. My mind's on the money.
Okay.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Interesting. Anyway, Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Approve to amend the Auditor's Office Procurement Procedures to Include Fixed Assets Management Section for Compliance Requirements.
Move to approve.
Got a motion? I have a second. I've got a motion and a second, Mrs. Cantu. Do you have any?
It's the grant requirement, and we have to have it part of our policy.
I'd like to read into the record. One of the things that it says, "Fiscal inventory by county auditor's office will be performed every two years to ensure condition maintenance requirement. Fiscal inventory will also be conducted by our insurance authority every four years to meet their compliance requirement." So, it says will, doesn't say shall, but I know y'all are, every two years, going out and touching each item.
We, that's what our plan is going to be.
I understand. You know, we talked about this the last time, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners' Whit. Wait, I didn't get a vote on this yet, I'm sorry. On Agenda Item Number Sixteen, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. What I was saying before, Commissioner Whit notified me that I skipped over Agenda Item Number Fifteen. My apologies, Lieutenant Franco. So, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Approve to declare Sheriff's Office vehicles as non-functional and unsalvageable and removed from inventory list. You have a list of five vehicles. Entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Approve the Elections Administrative Office, Administration Office to use the courthouse rotunda for the posting of election results on election nights for all elections as necessary.
The morning, our morning.
Hold on real quick. I've got a motion to approve in a second, Mrs. Warnix. You have a vote.
I just, we just wanted to make this a kind of a permanent situation so that we don't have to come to court each and every time and ask for it. That's what we're asking. I'm asking for it, that we will always be able to post the results from.
Absolutely, yeah. Unless some, some other issue comes up, we just need to make sure that we always remember to remind Candy or the bailiff so that we can have staff here, but that is a time-longer tradition in B County that I think we all enjoy very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Approve and accept Laura Warnix's resignation from the Salary Committee and appoint committee member replacement. Mrs. Warnix has submitted a resignation from the Salary Committee, which was self-evident when I read out the agenda item, and only as I started speaking, I realized that. Mrs. Warnix, we appreciate all of your efforts. I know for the past several years, you've, you've done a yeoman's job of, of guiding and working on behalf of the employees of B County to try to get us where we, there is fairness and equity across all employment positions in the county. We accept your resignation reluctantly, but I would entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
I, I too reluctantly make a motion to accept her resignation.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Whit?
Mrs. Warnix, you have put a lot of yourself into that work. No one will ever know how many hours you spent away from the office worrying and, and siphoning, if you will, over all that. The employees appreciate it, the Commission Court appreciates it, and thank you for your work, man.
It was my honor.
This was separate and apart, and a huge job you've done. Huge. Thank you.
Again, it was my honor and my pleasure, and I enjoyed working with all the people on the Commission, and I will, if I'm, if they have questions, I'm glad they have heard and helping any other way I can.
Okay, thank you. We'll entertain a motion to reappoint her as the Ex officio.
I'll second that one.
If there's no further discussion on this, on this motion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you again, Mrs. Warnix.
And do we have an appointment for a replacement service?
I don't really have a, a recommendation at this time.
I talked to Commissioner Fadiz, and he does, so I don't, he didn't say for me to do anything, so I'm thinking he'll bring it probably next time.
We can put it on the next agenda, and if there is anybody that's interested in the county, please feel free to reach out, and probably it would be best just to reach out to Mrs. Estrada in my office and let us know of your interest. So, it's a very important committee, maybe one of the most important that we have in the county. So, once again, thank y'all very much, and we'll move on to the final agenda item. Agenda Item Number Nineteen. Approve Recommendation from the Policy Formulation Committee for Changes to the Following Sections to B County Personnel Policy Handbook, Section 6.06, Compensatory Times. I don't.
Tell me to hold that for you, Judge?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is not a, not a, not a team I want to join. I got teeters if you need them. No. I don't need them. You can fight it as often as you want.
Elders, elders.
They're bad contacts. They're not bad eyes.
Some of us make it look like we're in our.
Maybe we're in the wrong direction.
Right. The changes, sir. You want me to read, Ms. Borrego? Would you like to explain this to your quickly-blinded county judge?
Oh, no problem. The one in court, our policy states it is really more restrictive than what's allowed by the FSLA law, that you can accumulate up to two-hundred-and-forty for non-FSLA law enforcement employees. That means they can accumulate two-hundred-and-forty hours of comp time on the book. After two-hundred-and-forty hours, we have to start paying them. The, but law enforcement, the law allows them up to four-hundred-and-eighty, double that. At one time, any of them go over four-hundred-and-eighty, the four-hundred-and-eighty first hour has to be paid until they bring it down below four-hundred-and-eighty or two-forty for non-law enforcement. Our policy is even further restricted to sixty hours. They want us to pay out over sixty, not to allow them to have over sixty. And what they've come up with since non-law enforcement gives one-sixty, they wanted to double that, like the law does, and one-twenty for, instead of sixty for law enforcement to pay out comp time in a sixty days. Is it sixty days or?
It says a hundred-and-twenty on there.
Yes.
Hundred-and-twenty.
Any compensatory time accrued must be used to pay, is that a hundred-and-twenty days to pay period it was on?
Yes, hundred-and-twenty. Okay.
And this doesn't prevent the Sheriff's Office from making requests to pay out comp time, I don't, or accumulation lower than this?
Correct, no. Right. The court has authority to. What they're just trying to do in general is, because budget, overtime is not budgeted for any department, and so, of course, that puts a burden, and it, the line item transfer, I mean, the line item for salaries will go over budget, and then the department head has to find money and submit to Auditor's Office to cover that overage in that salary line item expense.
What I'm reading here says that basically, we're adding, it says, as a general rule, no more than sixty hours, and what we're adding, a hundred-and-twenty hours for Sheriff's Office, is that correct?